For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the roll of counsel?
Counselor Member Dish?
Here.
Counselor Member Harrison? Absent. Counselor Member Watson?
Here.
Counselor Member Mallon?
Here.
Counselor Member Adina?
Here.
Counselor Member Gauzy Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Member Ayer?
Here.
Counselor Member Ackman? Absent. Counselor Member Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Member Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Move by, Counselor Ayer, second by Counselor Member Briggs. Discussion of the agenda. All favor? All opposed? The agenda is approved. Do we have any communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
We are fortunate to have two introductions today. First, from the Chair of the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission, an update from Chair Carter. Chair Carter?
Mayor, Chair Carter will be joining us on Zoom.
Excellent. Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good, good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Mr. City Administrator, councilpersons. I'm out of town, and so that is why I'm joining you in this manner today. As you may know, ICPOC does not meet in July or August. And so while we have not had a meeting since June, work continues with our committees, and we still have complaints, although we have had very few complaints this summer, and that is a very good thing. We believe that this last work year, we had more public events, community events than we've had in the past, and we have instituted a planning committee. And this coming year, we're hoping to have several more events where the public can come in. And we're asking the public if you have topics that you are interested in with regard to police oversight, with regard to police practices. We would very much like to hear from the community as to, we can bring in experts and so forth, and that's what we're looking forward to this coming year. Also, we will be meeting, normally our meetings are the fourth Tuesday of every month, but in September, because of a holiday, we'll be meeting on September 30th. That'll be our meeting for September. And of course, we have public comment at the beginning of each meeting. We invite the public to come. And also, lastly, we have currently a vacancy on the commission, and we are actively soliciting people to join, to come and fill out an application. They can do it either online through the city website or contact the commission office. So that is where we are. We look forward to starting our work year again on September 30th. If there are no questions, that is the end of my report for today.
Thank you very much, Chair Carter.
Thank you.
We now have the pleasure of a report from the Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority, Chair Thompson. Director Thompson?
Oh, thank you.
You have the con.
Okay. There we go. I think I'll put this in slideshow. Oops. Okay, thank you for your patience. So tonight, I am here to give you an update on our development plan. I want to just briefly talk about plan requirements and then dive right into some updated recommendations. So state statute dictates what is included in our development and TIF plan. And when you all receive the plan for consideration, you'll actually be receiving two plans. There are two separate plans. There is a development plan, which establishes the boundary and the activities that the DDA will undertake over the next 30 years. And then there is the tax increment finance plan, which speaks to the collection of that tax increment revenue and how that will be used. So how will we use the development and TIF plan? These plans are really a demonstration to our community of the work that we intend to take on over the next 30 years. They're also an implementation roadmap for staff. So we will be using this development plan as we do our annual capital improvement planning work and our budget work. And then on the board side, this is a reference document to guide them in their decision-making and in their oversight of staff. So, as you may recall, we were here in April. We did a fairly comprehensive overview of our draft development plan. Since that time, city staff, city administration and DDA staff have been meeting to review the recommendations that we included in the plan. And as you may recall, we included a moderate boundary expansion, a shift in our TIF distribution model to a gainshare model. And we believe that together, those changes will allow the DDA to make the investment needed in downtown to support our downtown into the future. So since that time, our boundary recommendation has been updated. You may recall, we originally were recommending an expansion to both the north and the south. After our meetings with city administration, we have landed on an updated recommendation What you will see in the plan is a recommendation for expansion to the north. This will be referenced as Expansion Area One. We believe that expanding to the north strengthens our existing district by allowing us to make improvements to two of the key gateways to our downtown. It also allows us to connect our existing district to the river, and it allows the DDA to participate in some key projects that ranked very high, as we did our planning with identifying future projects. On the TIF plan side, the recommendation that we shared with you in April was a switch to a gainshare model. That recommendation has not changed, other than the timing. When we were here in April, we were suggesting that the gainshare model in the existing district would not kick in until year 10. We are revising that recommendation, and we believe the gainshare model should be implemented in year one for both the existing district and the expanded district. And just to go over what that model looks like, this graph will show you the dark orange area at the bottom. That is the base value, along with inflation and property sales, that the taxing units continue to capture. So that, nothing changes with that revenue. The area above the orange area is the revenue growth from new development. So that is the TIF revenue. What we are recommending is that the taxing units receive 30% of that revenue growth from new development, and the DDA captures 70% of that revenue. We believe that this is a sustainable model that allows the DDA to make the investments that we need to make, while also allowing taxing units to benefit from that new development and that revenue growth. So, on the projects and programs side, the bulk of the development plan will be the projects and programs. 150 projects and programs were identified through the work we did in establishing these plans. We have projects across all of the categories you see on the screen. We believe that investing across categories is what a thriving downtown needs to do. So what we did was, using the city's strategic value ranking system, we ranked each of those 150 projects. We then took the top projects, the most highly ranked project, with projects within each category, and those projects became Phase One of our plan. So Phase One is the first 10 years of the plan. Statute does require us to have an implementation timeline. I'm not going to go through all of these projects with you tonight, but what I do want to point out are three projects that are only possible with expansion to the north. And that's 721 North Main. We have an estimated $8 million scheduled for remediation and landscape work at that site. The North Main Streetscape, which is study and design, and support for a potential MDOT jurisdictional transfer of that road. And then finally, the Fifth and Division North-South BRT. That is a critical project to improve transit. There are safety components. There's two-way restoration of Fifth and Division. It's a complex project that we could not participate in if our boundary does not expand. And then on the program side, the four program categories you're going to see in the plan are a continuation of work that we are already doing. We're going to continue to support in all of those areas, with the exception of service and maintenance. This is the area where we want to expand our role, and we want to do that by establishing a downtown service team. The service team will address the service gap that currently exists today. We know that our downtown needs more attention, and we believe the service team can give downtown the attention that it needs and deserves. We heard from council back in April, a desire for these positions to be union positions. Know that when we issue the RFP, that will be a preference in the RFP. And then on to next steps. So the timeline, which continues to be fluid. But tomorrow, the DDA Board will be voting to put the plan forward to council pending legal review. So assuming that the Board does approve that, I anticipate council's first action, which would be setting, a resolution of intent would be coming to you all to set the public hearing, will probably happen maybe in October, which would bring our public hearing to November or December, and would bring the plan to you in probably February. But this timeline continues to move, and we'll certainly keep you updated on that. And then finally, I just want to invite all of you and members of our community to our annual Bikeapalooza. It takes place on Saturday, September 20th, from noon to 2:00 at the old Y lot, otherwise known as 350 South Fifth or the corner of William and Fifth. So I hope you all can make it, and I thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We now come to Public Comment Reserve Time. Public Comment Reserve Time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at Public Comment Reserve Time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Finbar Conroy Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Finbar, and I live on Dexter Road, the 3200 block. I'm here tonight to speak about a danger that affects pretty much everyone on our road that's walking or biking, and that is speeding. Although the posted speed limit is 35, people routinely fly by at 50 or 60, sometimes double the speed limit. I see it every day when I'm biking, because I sometimes bike to school. I both biked here tonight. So this should just be a 30, 35 mile an hour road, but it's really a high-speed kind of So I would just ask that you guys consider reducing the speed limit, putting some traffic calming and stuff like that, just because it's only a matter of time before there's an accident or whatever, and that just wouldn't be good. Pretty much everyone ignores the speed limit on our road, and it's just really unfortunate when you're trying to walk or put out your compost bin or whatever. I think a good idea would be to put RFBBs, the like flashing crosswalk things. I know as part of the Dexter Sidewalk Crosswalk Project Initiative that's going to be happening, there's going to be crosswalks, but I'm not sure if there's going to be the flashing beacons as well. I think another good thing would be speed bumps and also those radar signs that post your speed, maybe give some attention to the drivers, I don't know. And then the last thing that's super, super important, increased police presence. You guys could make a ton of money on our road with tickets, for sure. There's no doubt about that. And that's pretty much it. I know on Miller Road, there's going to be a great project there with a double bike lane and reduced speed limit and speed bumps. So it'd be amazing if we could do something similar on Dexter. And I imagine that people will not want to drive on Miller quite as much once that project goes in, so they might be even speeding more on Dexter once that project is done. So please, just for the safety of everyone on Dexter Road, I urge you guys to take a listen and consider some traffic calming on Dexter Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for having me speak. I was here last time, a couple times ago. In regards to my son, Brandon Kelly, he was picked up by the Ann Arbor Police Department, homeless, suffering chronic mental illness. Fast forward two months later, he finally did go before the mental health court. He was ordered treatment, but there was some swing with that to where he was not hospitalized. Also, my son is still sitting in the Washtenaw County jail. He stated that he is not receiving hygiene products, and this is very alarming to me, having a son suffering from chronic mental illness since 2022, being picked up by the police on an alleged charge. He has not been convicted. I just wanted to make that clear. And just suffering for the last couple of months from chronic mental illness without receiving any treatment, as I'm still out here trying to advocate. I do not know about his well-being. As I stated before, we have not spoken. So I know there's several programs within this county that can offer different alternatives for those who are chronically mentally ill. I don't know the reasons for why that was not implemented when he was picked up with that known chronic mental illness that he had. So I'm just here hoping that you guys can come together, try to come up with some type of solution. I do notice, I have noticed that there is a rise in homelessness by 77% since 2022, and I'm just really concerned about our homeless population that is suffering from mental illness, and it is a big deal. I have witnessed people in court speaking on my son's behalf and his condition and laughing. It's not a laughing matter. It's a very serious matter, and it needs to be taken very seriously, not only by the courts, by the council, by the community, and especially by our law enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeremy Haley.
You might have noticed that no glasses cut on the face. I was involved with a friend while they were driving. A lady ran a stop sign and T-boned my side at about 50-plus miles an hour or so. Fortunately, she hit the front of her front right quarter panel mostly, but started encroaching on my door, so I was able, but not able to walk out with laceration, concussion, and a blast and all that good stuff. So it's a new look for me, I guess. What I like to talk about is the city property and new building and property, the parking garages, because someone told me a long time ago, you don't build on property you don't own. And I think that's, isn't that kind of what's going on with the parking garages? You're building the garages, but not owning the property under the garages, if I'm correct. And that would be a bad investment for the city residents, because it conflicts who owns what and where. It should be all completely city-owned. And with the opening of the new park that's coming up on the old DTE in north there, I was at another meeting where the, basically, those developers did admit that that property is never going to be fully remediated of the blue soil, the Prussian blue, the ferris cyanide. It's going to be cleared out about the first two to three foot, but below that, it's still going to be possibly infecting, you know, contaminated. And the park that's being built, it's not going to be, to my knowledge, it's not going to be a city park. It's going to be run and managed by the Lower Huron Conservatory NGO. And it was heard that it was, the city turned down the offer of making that a city park, which I think is not a good idea, because you're going to say the city has so many parks, but is this going to be, it allows now for enterprises and NGOs to take over property and create parks at their will. Given this thing now, you can give, oh, this NGO wants to create another park over here, they'll buy some land and do the same thing. It opened the door. Parks are for the people. And who enforces the rules and regulations on a private park, pretty much? I mean, if somebody gets assaulted or hurt, who comes to the police as private property? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Counselor Member Cornell?
I wanted to address some information that's been floating around on social regarding folks not coming downtown anymore, downtown not having any businesses that are opening, and painting a necessarily negative view of what is actually the reality downtown. So I went looking for data. And so my data sources are CoStar, which is the recognized leader in commercial real estate information. It has the most comprehensive database of real estate data in the United States. And Placer AI, which helps to make real estate decisions based on location intelligence and foot traffic insights. And so combining those two data points, or data providers, this will surprise no one that foot traffic was pretty steady during the weekday and from August 2018 to July 2019, and, which, pre-pandemic. And when you compare the same timeframe, including all days of the week and all hours, from August 21st to July 22nd, so removing that COVID time period, compared year-over-year through July 2025, the data show that daily activity has increased across all days of the week, and that there has been steady recovery and growth since the pandemic. CoStar's data shows us, looking at just the DDA and retail properties, those serving hospitality and retail, that from a high of vacancies in terms of measured in available square feet in 2023, that month over month, our vacancy rate is actually down, that it has been improving steadily since 2023, which correlates with the foot traffic and the visitor data. When you combine those two data points, it's a pretty compelling story. It's also really important, I think, to note that the month's vacant in market right now is 1.5. So the amount of time that storefronts sit vacant, contrary to what social media might have you believe, is not all doom and gloom. This is still a desirable place for businesses to want to be, and still a desirable, and stealing from Ms. Thompson's words, vibrant downtown. And I think it's really important that we recognize that, that's something as a community we should be proud of, that we can support that type of business activity in our downtown, that people want to come here and start businesses, and people want to come down and enjoy downtown. So I hope to see you come downtown, as more and more people are doing. I think that's really exciting. And on that note, a new business is opening in Work Five this weekend, next door to Downtown Home and Garden. It's called Ressas Cafe. It is a third space for working families.
Counselor Member?
Yes, sir. And finally, September 14th to September 20th is Neighborhood Week in Ann Arbor. And if you Google that, you can get information, too.
Did you name the business?
Ressas Cafe.
Carry on. Counselor Member Adina?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to remind community members to join us, if you're able, this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. on the Huron side of City Hall, when we will pay tribute to Ann Arbor's contributions to our LGBTQ and human rights history with a state historical marker honoring former councilmembers Kazachenko, Wexler, and DeGreeck, and the contributions of Jim Toy. This will be the first LGBTQ historic marker in the state, and I also just want to note how important that is, not just to me personally, but I think for our state and our community at a time when we're seeing tributes to the survivors of the, to the survivors and victims of the Pulse nightclub being torn down by hostile and frankly hate-filled governments in Florida and in other places. We still live in a place that celebrates the diversity of our community, that celebrates our history, and I am just grateful that we have an administration here at the state level and at the city level that can celebrate and honor that. And so I hope that you will join us. Former councilmember Kazachenko and former councilmember DeGreeck, along with a representative from the Jim Toy Center, will be present, and so it should be a wonderful event. I hope you will all join.
Counselor Member Dish?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Counselor Member Cornell for the evidenced-based presentation on the health of our downtown. Always appreciated. Thank you for the reminder about Thursday. Looking forward to it. I wanted to... I wanted to note that Councilmember Harrison and I had an information session last week, last Monday, at the Lower Town Barn Cafe on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and Mayor Taylor attended, and Brett Leonard fielded questions, and there were 50 people there. So wow, thank you. That was fantastic, and always very grateful for that space, which is a new space in our ward, and it's a very comfortable space. And Recess Cafe, by the way, is a place where children and their caretakers can go and socialize and drink. A full range.
Not the children.
Not the children. Yes. We were very excited on the liquor commission, liquor committee, or whatever we are, license committee, to see that place. So, that's all.
Councilmember Riggs.
I just wanted to briefly draw folks' attention to, under communications from the city administrator on our agenda, AC2, there is supplemental information about 415 West Washington and the Klein slot. Those are two big development projects envisioned for the Fifth Ward, and this has more information that we as council have received, so the public has seen what we have. So thank you to the administrator for placing that on this agenda, and it's my understanding that we will be hopefully voting on taking action on this at our next council meeting.
Further communication from, oh, sorry, Councilmember Ira.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, I and I know others of my colleagues joined the Ann Arbor Democrats at their annual picnic, where we were able to hear from labor partners about the challenges they're facing on the front lines. One story that really stood out for me came from the Environmental Protection Agency, where management is escalating a crackdown on unions, going so far as to tell employees that they must seek approval from agency management and ethics officials before working with their union, even on their own personal time. This is an attack on employees' constitutional right to organize, and it's deeply troubling. Here in Ann Arbor, we are proud to stand with organized labor. We've adopted a best value contracting policy that allows the cities to prioritize contractors who are strong partners with labor, and we've enacted an anti-sweatshop initiative to help ensure that the products purchased with public dollars are made under fair conditions. These are just two examples of concrete ways that we can align our values with our actions here in this city. Labor Day is a reminder that the protections workers enjoy today, from fair wages to safe workplaces to the weekend we just celebrated, were won through struggle, and those rights can never be taken for granted. They are under attack right now, and we must continue to fight whenever they are under attack.
I would like to nominate the following appointment for approval in a one-step process to the Renters Commission, Tana Pace. Moved by Councilmember Adina, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion? Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly address that the reason we requested, and the Renters Commission requested that the mayor moved this in a one-step process was because, in addition to a couple of vacancies we're trying to fill, we had an unexpected resignation because someone was moving, and so we actually didn't have quorum at our last meeting, and we want to make sure that we can get that commission back operational, as they have some business to do. So thank you for your acquiescence, council.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's approved with 10 council members present, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. I'd like to recommend the following nominations for your consideration, to the Downtown Development Authority, Stephen Fisher, to the Public Market Advisory Commission, Will Brinkerhoff and Marcus Flores, to the Ann Arbor Public Art Commission, Jenna Carter and John Jordan, to the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, Mark Foster. And I'd also like to note the resolution to appoint Carleen Getz to the Public Market Commission, which, as she is a non-registered elector, would require seven votes when the time comes. Further discussion? There is no discussion, that's me. All right. I have no further discussion. We now have before us a consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Ira, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Cornell.
I'm just feeling the love for Ann Arbor and downtown today, tonight. I just want to call attention to CA7. This is regarding the University of Michigan's Center for Advanced Transportation Technology and Innovation, known as UMTRI. Ann Arbor has long been a living lab for startups and for emerging technologies, and it's, I think it's pretty awesome to see that this technology that is being developed in Ann Arbor will also join private sector companies that are choosing to do this type of research, development, and testing in Ann Arbor. It's exciting to know that we are a place where a technology-based and innovation-based economy is successful, sets us apart.
Further discussion of the consent agenda? All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda is approved with 10 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA5 and CA8. And CA6. Thank you. And CA9. Well, now it's getting a little too much. Taking great care to determine that there are no others. In the absence of public hearings today, may I have a motion, please, to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 18, 2025? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Gussiedwin. Discussion, please, of the minutes. All in favor? Opposed? The minutes are approved. DC1 Resolution to Approve Purchase of Parkland on Fuller Road at Firstenberg Nature Area and to Appropriate $108,500 for the Purpose. Moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of DC1. Councilmember Watson.
This resolution would approve the purchase of a property adjacent to Firstenberg Nature Area for parks purposes. This parcel, known as the Van Dyke Dobos Property, has access to Fuller Road but is otherwise surrounded by Firstenberg Nature Area. The parcel has been used as a private garden and outdoor recreation space over the last 50 years, and has seen little disturbance over the last decade, making it easy to assimilate into the existing area. Acquiring this missing piece of property will protect the riverfront's natural areas and public access, and prevent further possible boundary disputes. Any residents visiting the area today would likely think the parcel is already a part of the nature area due to its appearance. Purchasing it maintains the integrity of Firstenberg Nature Area, which is one of Ann Arbor's ecological gems. This purchase was reviewed by the Land Acquisition Committee of the Parks Advisory Commission, and in addition, staff was able to reduce the price to acquire the parcel through negotiations with the landowner, resulting in a donation of 11% of the appraised value, or $10,000. And the purchase is still contingent on satisfactory title work, survey, and environmental site assessment results. I urge you to support this, and I'm grateful to staff for their negotiations in acquiring this parcel.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved, 10 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. Do we have the pleasure of a closed session today?
No, thank you, Mayor.
We have before us the clerk's report of communications, petitions, and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report? Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion of the clerk's report. All in favor? Opposed? The clerk's report is approved. Do we have communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
In the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please, moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? We adjourned.